Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, June 23, 2006. We're meeting in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. Welcome to the public's coming down to the festival here in Los Angeles City Council. This will be broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City. We also have information about elected officials, about proceedings at the City Council, and recent offices and meetings. We also have audio of the City Council meeting, which you can access at the Council Hall. You can call at 213-621-CITY. And this is your proceedings of the full City Council for our council committees. We are available also to come and go on the facility, Van Nuys City Hall. We are able to take testimony at all media after meeting three downtown. On the first Friday of each month, we take our City Council meeting out to the Valley at Van Nuys City Hall, so we hope to have their aspect. Each Friday, we give presentations to locals in the main theaters. Our first presentation, I can recognize Mr. NSI. We have a competition to do a presentation. We'll have five speakers. About one second, Mr. NSI.
Thank you, Councilmembers Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, and Zine. We are awaiting Councilmember Parks or Mr. Reyes to constitute a quorum of Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Reyes will please make their way down to City Council. Thank you. Okay, we are back and we do have sound. Again, I want to welcome everybody to Los Angeles City Council's meeting on Friday, June 23, 2006, here in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We're bringing broadcast live on Channel 35, and we are awaiting quorum, one more council member. But as is customary, on each Friday, we will be giving presentations, recognizing notables from the community and folks who have contributed to the well-being of Los Angeles. And so with that, we'd like to recognize first Mr. Labange to give a quick presentation, and then we'll turn to you next, Mr. Zine, to give a presentation. Please welcome for the 4th Council District, Mr. Tom Labange.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Hal Fishman. Come here. Stand with me, Dennis. Yeah, yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning on this beautiful Friday, on the first Friday of summer. We're having a great opportunity to honor someone who's very special to all of Los Angeles, all of Southern California, the great Hal Fishman. Hal Fishman has been honored today for 46 years of exciting years as the anchor, the premier anchor of Los Angeles broadcasting, and 40 of those years at KTLA. Hal received his MA in Political Science in 1956 from UCLA, and a doctorate was on his way to completing, a dissertation because he planned a career as a college professor at old LA State, now Cal State University, Los Angeles. In the summer of 1960, when the Democratic Convention was held here in Los Angeles, KCOP, a local TV station, invited him to teach an on-air course on American politic parties, political parties, and politics. Tied it with the important event that was having that summer of 1960, where John F. Kennedy was then nominated for president. Whereas the management of KCOP realized that they were, when people were watching Hal Fishman teach his on-air course, they invited him to come in and help broadcast and anchor the news on a very own segment. He moved from KCOP to KTLA in 1965, and Hal, I do remember those tragic nights in August in 1965, watching you broadcast from the 77th Street Station back to George Putnam on the Watts Riots of '65. But from that 1965 and continuously to 1975, he's bringing us the prime-time dominance in making the number-one news program in Los Angeles at KTLA, where he's an author and holder of 13 official world aviation records for speed and altitude. Hal is a flyer, an aviator, and you also do such a wonderful job describing any incident in the world when aviation is involved. You really learn from the professor, as Mr. Zine mentioned earlier in this morning's conversation. Hal Fishman is a multi-award winner journalist whose honors include the prestigious Peabody Award, Emmy Awards, the Governor's Award from the Los Angeles Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, and the Outstanding Broadcast Journalist Award, one of journalism's highest honors from the Society of Professional Journalists. In 19, excuse me, in 2002, the Associated Press Television-Radio Association presented Hal with his first lifetime achievement award and also named him the best news anchor for the third consecutive year. In 2005, he received the APTRA Award for the Best News Writing. The Los Angeles Press Club honored Hal and his KTLA Prime News colleagues with an award for the best regularly-scheduled daily news program for the coverage of the September 11 terrorist attack. Southern California Radio-Tellevision Association honored Hal for the Best News Commentary in 2004 and 2005, and he's the only one really left giving commentary, which is so important in local broadcasting. We have someone very special here today that is, is the one who educates the community and the team of people at KTLA have done such just wonderful job. And I, along with all of you and the mayor, as well as our city controller, Laura Chick and Rocky Doggedill, signed this resolution for 46 great years of Hal Fishman. And Hal, we brought you down here to salute you. Congratulations to Hal Fishman for 46 years here.
Hal, before you speak, there's a couple of council members you'd like to add their good wishes, starting with Bill Rosendahl, Mr. Rosendahl.
Well, it's Hal Fishman Day. You know, he's our Walter Cronkite of the Los Angeles area. I've known him for many years, and when I was the cable guy, he'd call me every now and then and say, "Bill, it's Hal Fishman, fix my picture." And we would fix his picture like we would everybody else, but what I like about him the most is his wit and his humor. And, you know, the news is tough, it's hard, it's edged, and we have to deal with every day's reality, but he puts a human energy around it that makes you want to listen because you feel the person has integrity and that he's telling us the truth. And then your commentaries always come from the heart and the mind together, and you say what you believe we should think about on issues, and that's a great contribution to all of society. So I want to thank you for being one of the best broadcasters in the nation. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, please. Mr. Fishman. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Thank you. I remember when Hal became the anchor, and if you look at Los Angeles Television, you have two legends in Los Angeles, Hal Fishman and Stan Chambers, two people who bring us news, who are professional, who are always there. And if you think of the editorial boards that used to be in Los Angeles, they're all gone. The only one left is the commentary by Hal Fishman, and it's a real tribute to KTLA to have him with that length of time and to have Stan Chambers. And I heard another reporter coming out, Jamie, I said, "Jamie, you any relation, you any relation to the famous?" He said, "Yeah, it's his grandson." And there's a real family history there at KTLA, and I just want to offer my congratulations. All the years I worked with LAPD and the news interviews that took place, and Hal was in the anchor chair, and there was a reporter out in the field, and we'd give those reports, but KTLA's always been that stable, common sense approach. And I remember the many years you served with Larry McCormick, and God bless Larry McCormick, one of your colleagues who served many years at KTLA. But it's a real family station, it's a real family tradition, and for Los Angeles, but to have you, the senior anchor in the world, Hal Fishman, the senior anchor, not in the United States, but in the world, that legacy is very honored, and we're very honored to recognize you today. Stan, I keep getting you with Stan, Hal Fishman. Hal Fishman. Congratulations, Hal Fishman.
Right in there, Hal. Gentlemen, I thank you, members of the council. Thank you very, very much for this honor. Let me just say, in the 46 years that I've been anchoring the news in Los Angeles, I remember the mayor of the city of Los Angeles at the time I started was Norris Poulsen, before Sam Yorty. That's how long ago it was. I remember that the President of the United States, when I started in television, was Dwight D. Eisenhower. So these years have proven to me the changes, the evolution that has existed in my business, in government that has taken place citywide, statewide, and on our nation. And I think that you and I are in the same business in many ways. We serve the public. You serve the public, and I serve the public, and we are always held up to the public for scrutiny. You in election time, me every night with the ratings. So we are responsible to our constituencies, and this is an important responsibility which I try to fulfill, and I know you do too. And so I would like to thank you for this honor. It means a great deal to me to have this august body bestow this upon me at this time in my career. I thank you again, and I bid you Godspeed.
All right. I know, why don't we go? Hey. I want, Mr. President could, just let's get behind the microphone, a group shot with Hal. Come on over here. Excuse me. Come on in here. And also, Hal, I want to give you a loaf of pumpkin bread from those famous duns up in Hollywood, under the Hollywood sign, because today Hal Fishman is an angel in the City of Angels. Here, here, for Hal Fishman.
Okay. Hey, come on, yeah, right in here. This is the second loaf of bread that I've gotten from you.
All right, good job. Jeff, good job. Come on, get right here. We'll do it right behind the microphone. We'll stand up right here. Come on, Eric.
Hi, 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 hi.
I'm coming right now, and after this, Mr. Zine will be our next presenter.
There we go, everybody.
Everybody, Jack, you coming in here? Here we go, real quick.
Eric's coming down, Eric's coming down. Eric's not here yet, hold on.
Wait, mail presidency.
Well, this is behind the microphone in the podium.
This is good. This is a good spot.
Try to put your hand on the item. Back up a little. I know, really.
Then you're getting into sexual harassment. Look who she's, look who she's down next to. Look at Mary Catherine, take your pictures.
Yeah, she can.
Good job. Right there, one more, one more right there, Eric. Mary Kay, you got it? All right, good job. Good job, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Hal. Great to have you here.
Hey, good seeing you. Thank you. Good to see you. Nice seeing you. Thanks.
Give it a good work, Jeff.
This is my loaf.
Your loaf.
Where's the plaque?
Who's got it? Tom's got it.
I got it right here.
And here's, here's the, here's the bag for your bread.
And next, we have our next two presentations will be presented by our council member from the 3rd District, Dennis P. Zine. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Before that, I'd just like to recognize Mr. Weston for a very important introduction.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and members. Today, we have a special visitor, a colleague, a councilperson from the great city of Long Beach, who just a few weeks ago won the Democratic nomination of the 55th Assembly District to represent us in Sacramento. I present Laura Richardson.
Thank you, Councilmember Weston and Mr. President and all colleagues. I just want to say that I was born and raised in Los Angeles. I look forward to being a representative, coming from local government. I know how important it is that Sacramento not balance its budget on your backs. I'll look forward to working with you and helping you and serving with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Laura, I want to, Laura, Laura, Laura. Laura, right over here? I want to offer my congratulations to you. I know we've worked on many different projects. I know you do well up there in Sacramento. You'll miss Long Beach with the nice, cool breeze up to Sacramento where it's humid, but I'm sure you do well up there. Best wishes to you. The next presentation, while we honored Hal Fishman for television news, we also have other people who bring us the news, and those are our journalists, the photographers. And I remember many years ago at a school I attended, photojournalism, a young man, who's no longer a young man, Joel Lugavere. We go way back to the, to the 60s. He went into photography, I went into law enforcement. Here we are today, standing together in a acknowledgement for the press photographers of Greater Los Angeles, and they're celebrating an anniversary. The Hollywood Press Photographers Association was formed in 1936 to exchange ideas, improve the quality of news pictures, and get the respect and recognition that news photographers deserve. The original group had 24 members, with George Watson being its first president. George Watson was one of the first staff photographers at the Los Angeles Times and the founder of Acme News Pictures, later UPI. One charter member, Corey Watson Jr., was still an active member. In 1944, many members went off to fight the war as combat photographers. In 1943, the organization was reorganized under the presidency of Frank Bentley, and the name was changed to Los Angeles Press Photographers Association. Many members served as photographers in World War II, and at least one died in action. 1946, the Associated Press photographer Frank Phelan won the first Pulitzer Prize for photography covering the island invasion, and following years, seven members won individual Pulitzer Prizes. More members of staff that were awarded staff Pulitzer Prizes. In 1948, the association sponsored a photography program at the Latuna County Camp for Delinquency Boys, consisting of a building of two darkrooms, studio, and lecture hall. And in 1957, they provided equipment to Children's Hospital. 1969, the name of the association was changed to Press Photographers Association of Greater Los Angeles, the Association. And in 1979, Joanna Matos became the first female president of the organization that was founded by all male members. Is that you? Okay. Okay, well, the only female here, I figured. In 1990, the association sponsored the Veterans Association Photo Class at Veterans Hospital. 2005, the Press Photographers Association of Greater Los Angeles Student Scholarship Fund, funded by retired members and past presidents, passed $23,000 mark in scholarship funds. And today, with more than 400 members representing all Los Angeles-area newspapers, television stations, wire services, the association works with photojournalism students at all area photojournalism colleges. The Los Angeles City Council recognizes you folks today for 70 years, on your 70th anniversary. We give you this resolution from the city of Los Angeles for 70 years of bringing us the photography, and they've got a book, just one more, which is an incredible collection of photos from all types of events. And when we look at the television news that we have today, we look at the still photos in the newspapers, and we look at how photography has changed over the last 70 years, from wet film to now we have digital to the high-speed internet where they can transfer those all over their place, but if they don't capture that picture, it never happens. So I want to acknowledge on behalf of my colleagues in the city council and the mayor, the controller, our city attorney, Rocky Doggedill, congratulations for 70 years, 70 years of the association, Press Photographers of Greater Los Angeles. Let's hear it for the Press Photographers of Greater Los Angeles.
And Mr. Zine, we have, Mr. Rosendahl would like to add his good wishes as well? Mr. Rosendahl?
Mr. Bill? I just wanted to make a couple of comments. In 1999, I was president of the press club, and we actually reorganized the club and turned it into a vibrant organization in this great city. And that great lady standing right there, Bonnie Burrow, come over to the, closer to the, to him. Bonnie Burrow was right there with me through all of 1999 in restructuring the club. She put her energy on the line, she put her time on the line, and that club now is having a big event tomorrow night, one of their annual fundraising events, and it wouldn't have happened, the revitalization of the press club, if it wasn't for you, Bonnie. So I want to thank you personally for that. And we all know a picture says a thousand words. I mean, we don't read all that much because we get so much to read in life, but when we flip through a newspaper or we flip through something and we see a photo that we flip through a newspaper, or we flip through something, and we see a photo that really hits us, it stays with us forever. So, we want to thank all the photographers for capturing the moment in a historic sense, and sharing it with people throughout the planet. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
John McCoy, the President. Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Zine.
To another President, President Garcetti.
And look, they're both being photographed, he's being photographed by two photographers from behind. Don't forget to turn around, so they get the good shot. There we go.
I would like to thank the L.A. City Council and Councilman Zine for this, this very gracious proclamation today. When the Press Photographers Association comes here today, we're coming home. After seventy years of press photography in Los Angeles, this is our home base, City Hall, right here. Our original charter states that our members can join the Press Photographers Association, provided that they're press photographers, and that they live within one hundred miles, live and work within one hundred miles of where we stand today. And some of us went up to the observation deck before the council meeting this morning, and we saw a plaque that, that resides there commemorating Lindbergh's beacon. And one of our founding members, George Watson, came up with the grand idea that the city of Los Angeles should put a beacon on the top of City Hall to help guide Charles Lindbergh on his historic flight. And there's a plaque commemorating the Press Photographers Association of Greater Los Angeles that is enshrined in stone on the observation deck of City Hall. So, thank you very much for this proclamation, and thank you for allowing us to document the city of Los Angeles over these past seventy years, and we look forward to doing it for at least seventy years more. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're now going to go into the official press room and do some more photography. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Do you want to do your second presentation as well, Mr. Zine?
I only have one.
Okay. Had you down as two, my mistake. Councilmember Hahn is our next presenter, from Council District Fifteen, so we'd like to recognize her.
And Deborah, where's Deborah? I don't know, why are they all like looking like they're not here?
Good to see you, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Colleagues, I'm, it's bittersweet, actually. Such a fabulous woman who is retiring from the Housing Authority after twenty-eight years. Kathy Lorenzen first started working for Hackla in 1978 as a records clerk. She went on to hold a number of positions, including working in the Valley, on the West Side with Section Eight families, managing the Crenshaw Leasing Office, managing the Mar Vista Gardens, managing Pueblo de Rio, and most recently, she was our manager at Nickerson Gardens in Watts. Kathy has also traveled around the nation to assist with natural disasters, including the Northridge earthquake, and working with the Housing, with the Houston Housing Authority following Hurricane Katrina. After twenty-eight years, Kathy has decided to leave the Housing Authority. And while I've really only known her in her work in my district in Watts, I can say that she will be truly, truly missed, certainly by us here at City Hall, and I know by all the residents of our public housing developments, which you have served with great compassion and distinction for all these years. I know my residents at Nickerson Gardens love you, respect you, and have really appreciated your hard work with them. With Kathy today are her family, some coworkers, and even some of our residents from Nickerson Gardens. And I'm going to have Deborah Boykins from Hackla to say a few words, and then Kathy, I'm going to ask you to say a few words. And I will tell you, colleagues, we've had, some of you may know, we've been working weekly in Watts since last December to try to stop the violence, increase the peace, work on a ceasefire. And Kathy has been there day in and day out, working with the residents, working with the mothers, working with the young men and women, and trying to keep the peace, and really fighting for opportunities for our residents of our public housing developments, and really working to make sure we have summer jobs, we have recreational opportunities in our developments. And she really, to me, epitomizes someone who is in the business of public service. And we will miss you greatly, Kathy. And Deborah, would you like to say something? And then I'll...
Thank you, Councilwoman Hahn. I'm very pleased and honored today to speak for the Housing Authority of City of Los Angeles, for Ms. Kathleen Lorenzen. She was actually hired on Valentine's Day, which represents love, and actually represents her and what she does. She has loved people all the way from the Valley, all the way down to South Central, and we will truly, truly miss her dedication, her love, and she's just willing to do everything. She is such a joy to be around, she is such a joy to work with. She diffuses hostile situations, and she has a very, very strong love for seniors. I've known her for over about twenty years. We started out working with seniors, which is really in her heart, because the young and the old need the most help, and she's always there to help anybody, old, young, or in-between, and she will truly, truly be missed by the Housing Authority. We don't even have anybody to replace her, because she is just so valuable. So, so valuable. And she will really be missed, and if Los Angeles doesn't really know they've lost a wonderful, wonderful public servant, they really, really have. And I am really honored and glad that you guys will honor her today, because we really do, and we miss her every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. So, Kathleen, on behalf of the entire City Council of Los Angeles, our city controller, our city attorney, our city clerk, the mayor, we offer you this beautiful resolution which congratulates you and extends best wishes on your retirement after twenty-eight years of truly dedicated service. So, congratulations. I will miss you. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you very much for this absolutely delicious resolution. I never could have dreamt of anything so beautiful. And I have enjoyed my years with the Housing Authority. More importantly, I have enjoyed working with our low-income residents, our disabled, handicapped, and seniors. And please, councilmembers, do not forget them. They need you every single day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we go in the back? Let's go take a picture in the back.
And thank you for your service to Los Angeles. Next up, Mr. Garcetti, to be joined by Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weston.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I want to thank my colleagues who are joining me for this presentation today. Mr. Weezer is helping out and taking care of Mr. Cardenas today, who has an excused absence. But we also have Councilmember Weston and Councilmember Reyes, celebrating something great for this entire city. And people often say that here in Los Angeles, we don't have an education system that's giving the basic skills to our young people, the skills they need to succeed in the workforce, but also to succeed in life. And today, we stand here as testament to young Angelinos who are doing a great job through L.A.'s Best. And the Fifteenth Annual L.A.'s Best Science Fair was a smashing success this March 2006. The annual Celebrate Science Fair is the culmination of L.A.'s Best Celebrate Science Program. So, throughout the year, and throughout the city, the young people here were engaged in fun-filled, interactive science experiences, utilizing the team inquiry model that was developed by L.A.'s Best under the guidance of the Jet Propulsion Laboratory of NASA. So, this program uses the resources that were developed in conjunction with NASA and JPL, Girls Inc., and other organizations, to help these students explore, discover, and develop an appreciation for the natural and physical world around them. Fifteen teams consisting of more than sixty young scientists from L.A.'s Best sites throughout Los Angeles presented their projects to a panel of volunteer judges, included Amgen scientists, a member of NASA's JPL staff, an L.A. USD school principal, and a member of L.A.'s Best's board. At the end of the day, twenty elementary school students from L.A.'s Best science teams at Castlar, Cohasset, Coliseum, and Allesian Heights, sorry, and Glenwood Elementary Schools took top honors, and all of these folks got a three-day mission to the U.S. Space Camp in Huntsville, Alabama. And a generous grant from the Amgen Foundation provided the funding for this, for the winning teams and their parents to go to the camp, stay in the space habitat, space station mock-up. They built rockets, and they experienced simulators and exercises that are used to train astronauts for space exploration. So, I hope you'll join with me, first in giving a great round of applause to these scientists and these young astronauts for what they accomplished. And what we're going to do is, I'm going to present, just hand my certificates to the students from Allesian Heights Elementary School, which is the elementary school literally around the corner from my house. So proud of Allesian Heights, and so glad to have brought L.A.'s Best program there. And I know it's an amazing school, it's had some of the biggest increases in the state. And then I'll hand it over to Councilmember Herb Weston, Councilmember Ed Reyes, and then Councilmember Jose Weezer. So, I'll read all these names, and I'll hand these over on the side. Please give a round of applause to Brian Guerra, Sage Scanlon Perez, Mateo Rojas, and Karina Moreno. Congratulations to all four of you. What a great work you did. And I'll hand it over to Herb Weston to mention his council, sorry, his astronauts from Coliseum.
First, I want to ask the students from Coliseum Elementary School to come up next to me. Coliseum. Are you from Coliseum? Thank you, Mr. President and members. To all of the young people here, from all of the schools, you are about to embark upon an experience that you will remember for the rest of your days. And I want each and every one of you to know, and in particular, the young people from the Coliseum Elementary School, that we are so proud of you. You are the astronauts of tomorrow. So, what I want to do, yeah, give them a round of applause, they are. I can't think of any kid that doesn't dream one day of being an astronaut. You individuals will have an opportunity to have a taste, just that taste of that. And again, these are memories that as you get older, you'll share with your children and your relatives. So, I'd like to get Janay McDonald, where, look, let's give her, Janay, a round of applause. She's, she's, not only, you're going to be a beautiful, smart astronaut, okay? Katharine Gonzalez, where are you? She, another one. Oh, that's my middle name, Jason, Jason Spears, where are you, Jason? And Taylor Turner. Anyway, enjoy yourself. We're going to go over to the side here, so that I think Mr. Reyes is next, and we'll take some pictures from the great tenth, from the great Coliseum Elementary School. Give yourselves a round of applause. We'll go right over here.
It's always exciting to see our young people excel and be recognized for their talent, knowing that they overcome many hardships, many challenges, and to think that you have an Agmin scientist, a member of the NASA's Jet Propulsion Laboratory staff, your principals and school board members of, should I say, the L.A.'s Best Board of Directors, being the ones who are actually acknowledging your talents. And as my colleagues have said, you are the future, our future astronauts, our scientists. So, I'm very proud to recognize the students from Castlar, who essentially have been able to participate in the space camp in Huntsville, Alabama, and for setting an example of excellence with the presentation of such an outstanding science project to a panel of esteemed judges, families, and friends. So, that, I'd like to award this recognition to Kevin Yang. Kimberly Tang. Kimberly. Tommy Lowe. All right, Tommy, congratulations. And Lizzie Lee. We can step on over here, and we'll take more pictures. Again, congratulations to the parents, thank for your support, and to our principal from Castlar. Very, very well done. Thank you so much. And now, my colleague from the fourteenth, Jose Weezer.
Thank you very much. I'm standing in today for Councilmember Tony Cardenas to recognize some wonderful students in his district, and it's great to see the young people here literally shooting for the stars. And it's great to see a program in L.A.'s Best that is supporting our kids to dream big, and that's what we're seeing here today. I want to congratulate Glenwood Elementary School, and Cohasset Elementary School, and the great support staff and teachers we see there. So, let me first recognize one of our great talents who, who we see here before us, Samantha Anna Silva. Anna, congratulations. Chris Alanis, Chris. Juan Silva. From Cohasset Elementary School, Whitney Parente. Is Whitney here? Oh, here you are, Whitney, congratulations. Cynthia Bustamante. And Julieta Salas. Thank you very much.
And I'll just close by saying just how proud we are of all of these students. I was talking to Sage right here, and I said, and she said she's the class representative at her elementary school, so I said, maybe you'll be a councilmember one day, and she said, nah, I'd rather be an astronaut or a biologist, so she knows where it's at. Please congratulate all these students for their great work. I know we're going to see them up in the sky and shooting for the stars. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And the final presentation, Mr. Weezer, you have the last presentation.
Colleagues and public, I'm really honored to be here today to honor a teacher that has taught for over thirty-five years, and has inspired, and has inspired thousands of children to go on. You know, this is graduation time. Many of us are attending graduation for either our own loved ones, or were asked to go participate in graduations throughout the city. And as I thought about that, I reflected back on what had made a difference in my life, and I thought about those wonderful teachers that were there for, for me, that allowed me to come on, and, and even as a young immigrant boy from Mexico, allowed me to fulfill my dreams of giving back to my community. So, I wanted to honor one of those special teachers that made a difference in my life. This is Ms. Pauline Griffith, who was my third-grade teacher at wonderful Euclid Avenue Elementary School. Let me tell you a little bit about Ms. Griffith. Pauline Griffith was raised in Hawaii to a Japanese-American father. During several years of World War II, she and her family were forced to live in an internment camp in Arkansas. Through this experience, she developed a strong sense of public justice, and she went on to join the Peace Corps in Brazil, where she taught Japanese immigrants. When it came time to find a career, she wanted to be a social worker. One day, she accidentally found herself in an L.A. USD recruitment office. She was looking for other employment, and accidentally found herself in an L.A. USD recruitment office, and she went on ahead and applied to be a teacher, and that's how I came to have her as my third-grade teacher at Euclid Elementary School. I am very thankful for that mistake, Ms. Griffith. And let me tell you... And let me tell you, this was a teacher who went out of her way to not only make sure we were learning in the classroom, but in a school that was made up of a lot of immigrant children like myself, they went out of their way to make sure that our parents were doing well, they went out of their way to raise funds, to have the whole class visit San Diego and the zoo, and they went out of their way to make sure that we were visiting Catalina Island and other things that many inner-city kids like myself in low-income neighborhoods possibly wouldn't have a chance to do. So Ms. Griffith, I want to thank you for your 35 years of dedicated teaching in the Los Angeles Unified School District, and I want to thank you for allowing this young councilmember the opportunity to fulfill my dreams by your dedication to me and other children like me. Thank you so much, Ms. Griffith.
Thank you.
And I want to present to you this certificate, signed by the mayor, our city attorney, Rock Adigodio, and myself, for your 35 years of service. Thank you so much again, and much happiness in your retirement, which happened two years ago.
That's right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for this great honor. I would, I humbly accept this in behalf of my students who graduated from high school and university this year, among which there's Berkeley, UCLA, USC, Santa Barbara, San Diego, Brandeis, Brown, NYU, University of Arizona. This is just a partial list. And I, like most teachers, or all teachers, we teach and hope that we have touched the lives of children and instilled in them the love for learning. And Jose was one of my prized students years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Griffith, and I purposely wore my Princeton tie today, and you did forget to mention Princeton in the schools you're in, to show you what wonderful things you've done to open doors for many, many students. So thank you so much, Ms. Griffith. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wezar, and congratulations. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Gardenas Grohl, Han, Wezar Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl Smith, Vice, Wesson, Sign, Garcetti, twelve members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order, what I'd like to do, colleagues, before we go to public comment, is go through the agenda.
First order is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those have been approved.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, there is a request to continue items 26 and 27 by Mr. Reyes for 60 days, and the new date would be September 12th.
Without objection, those items will be continued.
There's also a request to continue item number 39 by Councilmember Labange to July 5th.
That will be continued till July 5th.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearings, items one and two are street lighting, district ordinances.
Seeing no cards on that, are anyone calling item one and two special? Madam Clerk, open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Item been approved.
Next items are also public hearings, public hearing items three through nine, and the recommendation for council action would be to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to July 14th. However, I believe on item number three, there is a card, do you wish to hold that and call that one special?
We will hold and call that one special.
And that would leave before council four through nine, and again, the action would be to open the hearings and continue the hearings to July 14th.
Then those will be continued to July 14th. Next item?
Next items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held, items 10 through 15. Item number 10 was reconsidered on Tuesday and acted on, so no action is necessary on that one. That would leave 11 through 15.
Do we have any items called special, colleagues, on 11, excuse me, 10 through 14? We do have cards on item number 14, we'll call that one special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
So items have been approved. Next order?
Next items are items 16 through 41, those have not had public hearing, 10 votes are required for consideration.
We do have a card on item 16 and 18, and this goes through which items, Madam Clerk?
This goes through 41, and you have cards on 16, 18, 20, 31, 32, 34, 37, and 41.
We'll call those special for the cards. Remainder of the items, anyone else like to call them special? Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
So items have been approved. Next item?
That would take council back to the items called special and also public comment.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment this time. We do have someone at our Valley location, Bruce Darian, we connected to Valley. Hold on one moment, we'll connect to our Valley location. Bruce, you're on.
Yeah, okay. City Council, good morning, my name is Bruce Darian. I'm here to speak on the Malibu corruption, the relationship with the city of Los Angeles in the contracting fraud, and the environmental crimes that are going on with the Los Angeles River and the Pacific Ocean. Obviously, our governor Schwarzenegger cannot and will not, with Bill Lockyer, investigate or reveal the fraud connected with Malibu pier contracting project, as it involves several other politicians that are networked in that crime, including Mayor Riordan. I think that it's obvious that the city council is not gonna take any action regarding the network of crime with politicians that were state assembly members and that are now members of the council in relation to the pier fraud. I think it's important that we realize that 34 years ago this week, the break-in at the Watergate complex culminated into bringing down President Nixon and the fraud and the network of crime and political and the government that was exposed. This is no less in magnitude what went on then, and it certainly will take a process of uncovering the fraud and network of crimes that have gone on for the last several years. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Michael Hunt.
All right, good morning, City Council, back on the record. Wow, man, Channel 35 has got plenty of ratings now, I think the Outlaws have upped their ratings like two and a half, probably three percent now. It's good, it's good for my website, we had over 2 million hits, myspace.com/Imanigga2, featuring City Council. I think that good ratings, good showmanship, and good everything. Okay, go ahead, Bernard Parks.
Yes, Mr. Parks.
Stop the clock.
The issue is, is that we've talked about this over again, and no matter if it's a website or not, it's not acceptable to use the language that he's using, and I'd hope that we get Channel 35 to bleep that before it goes out again. And no matter how he blurs it, or no matter how he tries to bring it into his conversation, it's still inappropriate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parks, I know that we were talking about this in our Rules and Elections about the conduct of Mr. City Attorney.
Right. And you took it off the agenda, Parks and, what's his name, they took it off the agenda. But nevertheless, you guys put me out of work, so here I am, on the format now, and yes, you know, you guys should really read the paper, and any one of you guys want to have a debate, or any, any, any city attorney, any city hall member want to have a debate, let's get down in the national debate on national TV. You know, let's put up or shut up. You guys railroaded me, you guys did everything dogmatically to me that you possibly could do. But now that we're getting good ratings on Channel 35, and, you know, it's really ironic because 2 million hits on the website, that's really good, and it's featuring the city council. You know, why would you arrest me for working? Why would you sell me a fraudulent permit? It's called a nigger act.
I'd ask you to refrain from using that word, please.
No, as long as it's in the dictionary, I am not breaking any laws, and I am protected up under the Brown Act. Look at the Brown Act, it's a word. It's a word, it's not nothing else. And as long as you guys are being cowards and not want to have national debate on national TV, stop violating people's First Amendment rights. Once you stop that, the nigger act will stop.
Yes, Mr., our city attorney, please.
Madam President, if council makes a finding that his comments are disrupting the meeting, he can be asked to refrain the next time he goes up there, and if he continues, then he could be prohibited from speaking.
Thank you. And again, I think there is a unanimous feeling on this council to ask him again to refrain from using that offensive and, I think, libelous word. Yes, Mr. Parks?
I would like to say it's not only offensive, it disrupts the meeting, we are not here, we're not on the boardwalk of Venice Beach, we're in the city council where we're conducting city business, which should have a little more decorum than what this young man wants to bring forward. Whatever his issues are about the law on Venice Beach, there is a court process to go through. The city's already decided on what that law is, he needs to debate that in court as opposed to in this forum.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Attorney, do you want to say something else?
And just to underscore, the key is whether it's disrupting the meeting so that it's not content-based, it's conduct-based.
Correct. Thank you. I'd like to call, we have representatives from the South Central Farmers here today.
Good morning, Honorable President, honorable city council members. I'd like to take this moment to applaud the city council and the city of Los Angeles for doing, taking broad steps in an effort to overcome global warming. I know we have electric cars, city natural gas-powered buses, I think that's a broad step. If any of you have seen Al Gore's movie, you know that this planet is in big danger of CO2 emissions are going to the roof, and it's time to take broader steps. I believe that the city council has an unprecedented opportunity to take a stand for global warming, that that opportunity is the South Central Farm. Now, you might say that, what's the point? It's 14 acres, there's a lot of other stuff going on in the world. The point is that every tree, every acre is now important. As fuel prices keep rising and the cost of shipping keeps going up, it's gonna be more and more important to empower people to grow their own food, to have a place to meet, and if we don't do something about global warming, Venice is gonna be underwater in 50 years. If you don't believe me, just go see Al Gore's movie. Again, I applaud California politicians, California is at the forefront, always at the forefront of environmental laws. This is an opportunity, the South Central Farm is an opportunity for city politicians to take a stand, to make Los Angeles not only the greenest city in the country, but the greenest city in the world. Now is the time, there isn't any other time, but now, if we don't do it now, we're gonna be in big trouble. Ladies and gentlemen, you, the city council, have an opportunity to lead us. Which one of you is gonna be that leader? I'd like to present Bill Rosendahl with a movie, I saw him down at a Tree People gathering, giving a great presentation, and I'd like to present him with a movie about the South Central Farm.
Thank you very much. Elsalma Lopez. Or you can state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, the...
Could you state your name for the record, young man?
Jesus.
Jesus, thank you, Jesus.
A lot of people went over there to get their medicines, their herbs. Jan Perry never even let us know that we were gonna get evicted. She never even went over there and told us, she never even let us move on. A lot of people needed that place for food, money, and their safety. Everybody was very sad when we found out that they were destroying it for no reason. She never even gave us the, the day that we were gonna get evicted. We never even got to get our stuff. She, she gave the order, we didn't even know, we didn't take our stuff. She thought that place was for nothing. The destruction that they made was horrible. The tractors came in, destroyed everything, and made everything into garbage. But what they didn't know that, they broke some water, water keys, and now the garden is feeding itself. So they destroyed everything, but they didn't destroy the roots. So no matter what they do, they will, the plants will always keep growing, so we're always gonna be here helping, and the people will always keep fighting until we get our farm back, because that, a lot of people got their stuff, their food, and were able to keep their families on moving. And from now on, we're gonna keep fighting for that place until we get it back.
And...
My name is Josefina Medina, y yo les cedo mi tiempo a Edgar.
Good morning, my name is Josefina Medina, I'm going to give my time to Edgar.
Time after time, we have come here, demonstrated, voiced our concern, and for the last three years, we have been ignored, you know, for the South Central Farmers. As I look at every single one of you, you know, I see that you guys are so disconnected, but yet so close to our community. And none of you have ever taken the courage to step up and point out the injustice that has occurred in South Central Farm. You underestimate all of us, because we're very determined in our will, and we have not even lost hope. Keeping in mind that each councilmember's duty is to look out for the concerns of his community, I find it even very hard to believe that Jan Perry has that same concern, you know, when District Nine is the less greenest out of all the districts, the water pollution, you know, and I yet have not found a paved, well-paved street. It's hard to rebuild the community in the valley or in the ghetto, where there's such cultural difference and many kill for ignorance. But how does District Nine, you know, with the intentions, Jan Perry, you know, to destroy the South Central Farm, you know, save Haven for the children, you know, how does that, how does that relate to? It's not a race issue, it's a class issue, and it's greed, you know, and for that, the truth has to be said. And as I look at every single one of you, you know, let me give a little leadership 101. To be a good leader, you have to be a good listener, you know, and so far, you have not been listening to us. I want to give my best of the means to Dele.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Elisa Viña, les cedo mi tiempo a Dele.
As you prepare to leave for your homes over this weekend...
Could you state your name again, just so far that we have it for the record, sir? Just state your name.
My name is Dele Ayileme.
Thank you.
As you prepare to leave for your homes over this weekend, I want you to remember the mothers and the children who no longer have the safe space where they used to come and play, where they used to come and farm, where they used to have their recreation. They have been dislocated, they have been evicted, and so they will not have the safe space that used to be their center for agriculture, the space that used to be their center for
Please, go ahead, sorry, the timer went off.
The space that used to be their center for the acts, their recreation, and everything else that they used to enjoy in life, that is the place from which they were evicted on June 13th.
Are we having trouble with the timer? Please, go ahead.
That was the place from which they were evicted on June 13th. It is unconscionable that after the struggle of Cesar Chavez to give some dignity to the lives of farmers in this country, and to give improvement to the living conditions of people with the history of Chavez Ravine, where coincidentally, 350 families were evicted some four decades ago, the same number of families that were evicted... The same number of families that were evicted from the South Central Farms, that this is the kind of legacy that Mayor Antonio Villarrealza wants to leave behind. And for Jan Perry, the councilwoman Jan Perry, it is a matter of shame that she has not cared to hold any kind of public hearing to relate with this pharmacy in any way. But we are here to please appeal to the city council, particularly to Councilman Garcetti, who is the president of the council as of now, to initiate an effort to ensure that the sacred objects that were left on that farm on the day of the eviction, that some arrangement is made so that the owners of those sacred objects, the owners of those religious objects are allowed to come and remove those objects from the farm. It is very, very important. These are spiritual artifacts that people have kept there in the past 14 years. I see that the city council is giving a lot of honor to students and to children who are doing great things in this city. For the volunteers and the youth of South Central Farms, this particular city council may not recognize you, but history will thank you for defending the environment. For our own volunteers who are working so hard to do something great for this city, I hope you will remember to do something for them. In the name of Tom Bradley, who gave that land to the committee of South Central, for you to do honor to Cesar Chavez's work, save the South Central Farm, and let the people who worked that land and tilled that land, labored on that land for 14 years, let them return to that land, which has saved the South Central Farms.
Thank you.
Buenos dias, my name is Jose Nicolas, and I give my time to Edgar.
Good afternoon, my name is Ahmad Jamal. After the unnecessarily brutal and expensive attack by members of both the LA County sheriffs and the Los Angeles Police Department against farmers and their supporters, the most overwhelming feeling was sadness. Some anger, some fear, but mostly sadness. We were not surprised by the attack, but we were surprised by the scope and the expense involved. It surprises me that in a city as allegedly strapped for manpower and the police forces LA, would deploy officers at a ratio of nearly five to one to do the personal bidding of one man and evict hard-working families from an urban oasis. But what should not be a surprise to any of us is that we have regrouped and developed a greater sense of camaraderie and resolve. Our sadness has been replaced with determination, and our discussions no longer revolve around what we have lost, as we focus on what it is that we have to gain. A sister reminds us, those who sought to destroy the civil rights movement in Alabama by launching police with dogs to attack Reverend Martin Luther King and his supporters, but that movement was not destroyed. On the contrary, it was strengthened by people's resolve and attracted more allies. Those who have chosen to join us in our continuing struggle do so because they can see that an area like Council District Nine, which has a high concentration of warehouses already and very little green space for its nearly 80,000 residents, needs the South Central Farm. They understand that an area with such low air quality would greatly benefit from the South Central Farm. They can see that an area as impoverished and crime-ridden as District Nine needs a safe haven and a source of nutritious food that was provided by the South Central Farm. Some have tried to reduce this struggle to one of property rights. These facts transcend that issue. They speak to impropriety and political biases by elected officials, to misuse of government and therefore the people's property. In addition, they speak of malfeasance and other serious elements of corruption. In short, our discussions have deepened our understanding of the role of government and government officials. We thank you for that. As we discuss these amongst ourselves, we cannot help but seek redress from those who facilitated the destruction of the largest urban farm in the country. Remember those of you who will wash your hands of the affair like Pontius Pilate. We will convert our resolve into action in the same fashion as the Reverend Martin Luther King did. And as I look onto item 14 on the agenda and to see the hypocritical amendment by Jan Perry...
Thank you. Next. Alberto.
Good morning, city council members. And as this council demands respect, we also demand that you hear us. You guys are, most, all of you know what's going on in South Central. We've been here for the past three years, and we will continue to come on this, until this city council solves this issue in South Central. We, we are a strong community, a strong community that stands for a principle, a principle of having families feed their kids and feed their children. And that's what we are about. We're trying to pursue something that is beneficial for the community, and the South Central Farm represents that. You know what? Wherever there's dirt, we're going to go plant. Because you know what? We need food. And apparently, I don't know, you guys have not done anything yet. And also, I would like to point out, you offer us to relocate under 111 in Avalon, but you don't tell the public that that land is underneath power lines, which causes cancer and leukemia to our children. You have not exposed that information to the public. That's why we said no to relocation, because they wanted to offer us land underneath power lines, and that is not acceptable for our community and for our children. So I'd just like to say, you still have time to redeem yourselves, city council and Mayor Antonio Villarrealza. If you want to be true leaders of this city, then you should stand up for the necessities of this community, because we have been here for too long, and we're going to continue to come until you resolve it. This issue needs to be addressed immediately. We are a community, and you, you've seen yourself, all the supporters we have here, because they see what we have done to our community. They see what we provide for our kids and our children, our elderly. And we will continue to bring more supporters out, just to let you guys know that we're still there and we're not, aquí estamos y no nos vamos, and that's what it's always been.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is Jasmine Sadie, and I'm here in support of preserving the South Central Farm. I live on the west side, where I have the benefit of a two-mile ride to the beach to enjoy the beautiful air, to go to the grocery stores where I can buy organic products. But the families who have been subsisting on the farm don't have that luxury, but they do have the benefit of working a wonderful piece of land in the middle of the most polluted area of our city, that is actually making a nice change to the global climate change that we're hearing about everywhere. We need to wake up people, please listen to their plea. I'm just an average citizen, I'm a resident of Los Angeles, but I have made the effort to go down to the farm every night to attend their vigils. Have any of you attended a vigil down there? Have you had a chance to meet any of these farmers? I met a woman the other night, her name is Sonia, and you know what she told me? She said, "This is how I eat. I don't eat meat. What am I going to do? What are you going to do?" The question I have for you, ladies and gentlemen of this council, is what are you going to do? How are you going to leave a legacy behind as a group of men and women who stood for the protection of the farm, a viable, sustainable source of food and a healthy environment for our community here that would serve as a role model for cities around the country? Or are you going to turn your back against progress? For protecting this farm is truly a sign of progress. I leave you with a Native American proverb that says, "We can poison our waters, we can kill the fish and the animals, we can pollute the air, we can destroy our forests, but we cannot eat money." Please think with your heart and with your eye on the future, protect the farm, and place Los Angeles on the map as a city that leads the nation in social and environmental consciousness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next, next, next speaker, please.
Buenos, Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yo soy Manuel Garay.
My name is Manuel Garay.
I give my time to Alma.
And I'm going to give the time to Alma.
Thank you. Yesterday at a meeting of the MTA, Mayor Villarrealza addressed a room full of students who were there to protest the elimination of a student pass. The mayor told the loud and energetic crowd that he supported them not because they were loud, but rather because their cause was just. For three years, we have attended your meetings, asking you to examine the circumstances under which the land at 41st and Alameda was sold to Ralph Horowitz. We asked you to examine whether you had properly served the interests of all Angelenos by selling Horowitz's original land and then some at a bargain basement price. You've done nothing. Like Pontius Pilate, you washed your hands of the entire affair. Some of you have hidden behind the courts to justify your non-action, but objectively, your stand has been to support that sale. We ask you to examine the advice given to you by city attorney Rocket Delgado. We ask you to examine his track record to see whether he's ever taken a stand contrary to the wishes of well-heeled developers. We ask you to connect the dots and see if his advice regarding Lincoln Place, the Valley Village condo conversions, and the South Central Farm has ever sided with the community rather than the developers. Is it not your job to act as stewards of the property the city holds in the name of all of its residents? Are you not the servants of all the residents of this city? If you agree that the eastern portion of District Nine needs more green space, that selling, that the selling price was questionable, that poor people should be encouraged to be self-sufficient, that democracy allows for questioning laws and court decisions, why didn't you fight the court ruling on which you based the sale of the land to Horowitz? You knew Delgado wouldn't. We have visited you repeatedly because our cause is just. Our battle cannot be reduced to one of squatter rights versus property rights.
Thank you. Thank you. Miss, Mr. Smith? Please, Mr. Smith? Yes.
Madam President, we are 15 minutes over. I call the orders of the day.
Okay. All right, we, we have other public comment speakers who are not part of South Central Farmers. I'll read the names of those individuals who are here. Roberto Marcias, your cards will go on the record. Al Salmo Lopez, Maria Reyes, Carmen Gaspar, Lucila Delgado, Luis Morales, Maria Avina, Alicia Vina, Rosa Ramirez, Sandra Luna, Federico Vargas, Vicky Hernandez, Valentin Diaz, N. Unaki, Samuel Sanchez, and Aggie Jepson. Thank you very much for being here this morning. Our next speaker is Candido Merez. Candido?
Good morning, council members, Madam President. Mr. Smith, I want to apologize to you. I've been under the weather, and so I haven't been able to be there, because the way you work our district, the way you're out there in the community, the cleanups, everything that you do, it's hard. Unless you're going 100%, it's just very difficult. So I apologize to you, and I look forward to working on your reelection and in those four years that we'll be having together, we're going to do a lot of things in the 12th district. I hope to work side by side with you on those efforts. Mr. Zine, I was at home in bed watching the city council, and I saw as you asked everybody to stand and put their hands on their hearts and to repeat the Pledge of Allegiance, that flag and that pledge is what gives every one of us our First Amendment rights. So I believe that it's something that we should hold sacred, and I thank you for that, sir. And I understand that, but that's the greatness of this country, isn't it? That's the greatness of this country. I do want to respond to a good friend of mine, and I'll be quick, Madam President. Mr. Don Schultz, on Tuesday, made a comment about the South Central Farmers, and Mr. Schultz and I go back many, many years. He's a dear friend of mine, and if I was the, the council member of the 6th district, I would appoint him honorary mayor of Van Nuys. But the South Central Farmers, and I've been here for the three years, I've been here for almost 16 years, the good, hard-working people, and I've supported them all along, they are kind, decent, and honorable, okay? And I understand a lot of you folks have joined them, and I respect you for that, and they need your help. But I want the public to know that the farmers who are actually doing the work, and when everything is settled and everybody goes away and the cameras are away, those individuals are fantastic human beings just trying to save something that is very, very important to them. So I just want to thank the South Central Farmers, the original ones, for the, for their dedication to their fight. And lastly, Mr. Garcetti, I don't know where you're at. I was here throughout Mr. Ferraro's term as president. He was a fantastic man, but you're the captain of this ship, and it's your ship to steer, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd, followed by Jack Neff.
Can we reset the clock, please? My name's Matt Dowd, I'm representing Venice Beach. I just noticed you voted unanimously for a woman, Raymond Methode, in the planning department, and she stood up and said how keen she was to work. And she told you how it's a basic right to have accommodation, food, clothing. And there were probably 500 people on the beach who had a permit from the city to earn a living, and they were permitted. Now, out of 1,200 permits, I'll put this in a, in a money language so you understand it, out of those 500 people who were wiped off the beach from nominal utility, possibly 200 of those were arts and crafts people. You know, there's a guy who used to paint light bulbs and make a nice pattern on the wall, whatever that was, that's art. But now nominal utility wipes that out, people who make leather goods. But let's say there's 200 people, Bill, who make art and craft, and they make $1,000 a month, okay? That's $200,000 a month, 2.4 million a year. Those people are collecting that money, there's no evidence that those people are going to spend that same money. No one sells light bulbs on, on the east side. So it's like 2.5 million dollars getting ripped out of the community. Then they're not putting the money under the bed, we're paying for our dental bills and our rent and insurance and the high price of gas, food, everyone's got to pay for food. You know, you wonder what kind of message that you send to these people, because that's the little guy getting ripped off every year now for 2.4 million, and they're spending that money in the community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Neff, Jack Neff. Edgar, I'm sorry, I can't read your writing. Is Edgar here? Ahmad Jamal, did you speak, you spoke before in the, there. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins?
Good morning, everyone, my name is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. This must be done concerning our new travel plan because of illegal gas for our 58 states of people. No traveling, all public people on airplanes if these airplanes are paying AM, American Airlines, Blue Jet, Mexico Air, Echop, Eskimo, and Delta airplanes. These are causing our public people brain damage, causing us to think little, with very little memory of the past, because they are using illegal gas and not regular gas for these airplanes. All 50 states can travel to United States, 50 states, but not on these airplanes with this legal gas. Again, illegal gas is the legal weapon to kill because we are United States of America government. And we didn't receive all these illegals from their country, of other Jewish people, public people country. Therefore, it is an attack on United States of America people whom is traveling. United States of America people, public people, is ruling and winning every state in USA versus these Iraqi peoples that are in United States of America, 50 states to kill all USA with travel, food, and medication. Please know eating any hot dogs because of their leader is dead, whom is Dr. Wanda Davis, whom is known as Mrs. Wiener, has destroyed and faked that she has put out in all grocery stores, good hot dogs, that is made with turkey and chicken.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Velinda Jo Wright, our next speaker. Ms. Wright, thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Ms., thank, thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Thank you. Velinda Jo Wright.
I just wanted to say that you guys are really terrific and that... I just wanted to say that you guys are really terrific and that what you do is a great public service, and I admire you. You've got tremendous courage, and I just... I'm finished.
Thank you very much. Maritza Alvarez, did you speak during... Maritza?
Good morning. I want to share a global story and zoom in locally as to the cause of the South Central Farmers. In 2004, Wangari Mati, a Kenyan African woman, was globally recognized as the recipient of the Nobel Peace Prize, as some of you may know. She was recognized for her tenacious work for promoting ecologically viable, social, economic, and cultural development in Africa. Despite the repressive local, state, and national political resistance she encountered, for over 30 years, she helped mobilize poor women and plant 30 million trees to promote sustainable development, democracy, and peace. I share her story with you so that you can have a glimpse or a degree of understanding as to the cause of the South Central Farmers here on a local level. I share this story because she is only one example of how someone will take huge personal risks to fight for justice, human rights, and the environment. And while she serves as an inspiration to many around the world, I am sure that Wangari Mati would also be inspired by the South Central Farmers. She would be honored to know that farmers like Rosa Ramirez, Federico Vargas, Vicky Hernandez, Manuel Garay, Josefina Medina, Alberto Tlatelpa, Jenny Calderon, and many, many others who have been coming here continuously for the past three years and for the past 13 years have created a holistic approach to sustainable development in South Central LA. Yes, South Central LA. I don't know where Jan Perry is, but I think she knows where South Central LA is. They created this sacred space from what used to be a whole warehouse dumping ground, basically. And like Wangari Mati, they will continue to struggle to take a stand to reclaim the South Central Farm. No police force, no guns, no backroom sweetheart deal orchestrated by Jan Perry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next is Duke Russell. Duke, may I have order, please? May I have order in the chambers? Mr. Duke Russell? Duke Russell, okay? If not, Summer Reese? Summer... Okay, thank you. We have had speakers on... Are you here on South Central Farmers?
Yes, but I live in San Bernardino County, over 100 miles away from the farm, and I think I should be...
Yes, but we had already closed on the South Central Farmers. We had our 10 minutes. Thank you very much, though. We went over 20 minutes on that issue.
So despite the fact that I'm willing to drive 100 miles to go to the farm, you're not even willing to let me speak for 10 minutes?
Madam President?
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you. Madam President, I just want to point out... Can you please turn me on, please? I just want to point out that under Council Rule 8, Council Rule provides, "Council shall also provide an opportunity in open meetings for members of the public to address it for a cumulative total of up to 10 minutes on items of public interest." It doesn't say 10 minutes per item. It's a cumulative total of 10 minutes, and we're well over that, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Weiss. Madam Clerk, if we could go to... We've closed public comment. We're going to go to the special agenda at this point. If you could call that roll for the special meeting.
Cardinist Grolhan Weezer Labange Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss Wilson, Zine Garcetti, 11 members present, and I call Madam President.
Yes, if you could, first item, please.
First items on the agenda are both items for which public hearings have been held, HCED reports.
That is item 1 and 2?
Yes, item 1 and 2.
I think Mr. Rosendale would like to call item 2 special, and we will hear that, but I'd like to vote. On item number 1, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 3 through 5, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any specials there? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Does item have been approved?
And that would take council back to item number 2 that was called special by Council Member Rosendale.
Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, thank you for realizing in the past we talked about the killing on June 5th of Augustina Contreras, who was gunned down in the parking lot at Venice High School. We put together a motion to bring all the resources of the city to focus on it and come up with a report in 10 days as to the best way we can move forward with both Delray and with Oakwood, which is where the issues are with gangs. The gang intervention programs are working. We have a Safe Passage to Schools program. Yesterday, I was at Mark Twain Middle School, and it was a terrific opportunity to see L.A. Bridges One and to see that 150 of the kids are participating in that program. Obviously, I want to extend it to Venice High School, and I want to extend the relationship stronger. This motion gives us an opportunity to see if we can pull city resources together and take a new focus on the neighborhoods of both Delray and Oakwood. And I would like, if I could, ask both Alan Freeling and sitting next to him is Captain Bill Williams of our Pacific Division, who have both been outstanding leaders in this. And I might say that Captain Williams and the police force have been terrific in providing calm and support to all the communities there, especially right now in Oakwood and in Delray. And Rabbi Alan Freeling with the Human Relations Commission has been part and an integral part of the process of finding ways in which we can bring people together. This motion means a lot to all of us in the 11th district, but I'd like for them to say a couple of words. Captain, why don't you just say a word or two first?
Thank you, Councilman. Those of us in the Pacific area are really working hard in terms of trying to resolve this incident. We have put a number of resources, working, investigating this tragic event. We have had some good leads, but we still need just a couple of things that we can go out and make an arrest. We've asked the public in public meetings to contact us via the 877 lawful to provide us information. We've worked with the community. We're working with the Los Angeles Unified School District. We're working with the Human Relations just to provide a calm. And at this juncture, we feel that we are keeping the lid on, but we need all the help that we can get to deal with that. And we're very appreciative of the council office and working with us and working with the partnership.
Thank you, Captain. And as you heard, you said all the help we can get. And the help is the CLA and others will look at our resources as a city and see how we can coordinate the resources and be an effective part of the solution of what is a problem right now between various gangs and groups and communities. Rabbi?
I think that you need to be aware of some patterns that have taken place. There is a very strong coalition of agencies that are working vigorously at Venice High School. They were there before the tragedy, and many of them will remain long after, including your own Human Relations Commission. Obviously, these collaborative partnerships are very important because not one agency will be able to accomplish everything that you wish. Simultaneously, there is a coalescence of forces within the Venice community as well. The Human Relations Commission is charged with the responsibility of analyzing and researching situations and then to make recommendations as we move forward on our own and in partnership with others, and that's exactly what we're doing. A considerable amount of attention has been given to one particular nonprofit in Venice. What we're doing at the moment is we're developing a long list of non-governmental organizations which deserve attention and ought to be brought online, and that's exactly what they will be, so that there is then not only concentration on the school, which obviously needs attention, but also the community from which those students come. The strength of this motion is to call for an analysis and research as well as action. And therefore, I believe that the two of us have been brought together by Council Member Rosendale to echo the importance of this motion. I will tell you, in the case of Janice Han, we have had three people working in Watts two days a week since February. We don't know how long we will be there. We will be there as long as is necessary. And again, it's researching, it's analysis, it's bringing people together who have had a tendency not to talk together, organizations which have not worked together. And now we are in the process, along with the council member, of creating community. The problems that exist in Venice and in the Delray area will only be solved when there is a strong sense of community, which we can help to engender, and when people take on the responsibility, which is theirs, to move their community forward, taking advantage of the resources that we bring to them.
And I want to thank both of you gentlemen and colleagues. 10 days is a short time fuse, but we're going to get to CLA's office to coordinate all of our looking and seeing and come up with a plan that will be helpful. I just need, Madam President, a technical change to add the city of L.A. before Human Relations Commission, just to clarify it. I would love your unanimous support to move forward with this motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendale. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the amended item before us. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendale.
And Madam President, I'd like to go forthwith with this.
Forthwith.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes our special meeting agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam President, it does.
We will adjourn our special meeting and go back to our regular meeting on those items that have been called special. First item?
First item called special is item number 3, and that was called special for a call from the public after the council hears the matter. It should continue the matter for the hearing and the ordinance on July 14th.
We have Michael Hunt and Matt Dowd. Michael Hunt and Matt Dowd.
Welcome back on the record. Big ups to Channel 35. We're talking about lighting here. I think that it's very important to keep our streets safe and keep our vets safe. Lighting is one of the forms of community-based policing that we have. If you light up the district, then you have less crime, and you have a better way of seeing what's going on in your neighborhood. So with that thought, I'm going to leave you guys with this, that keep all the neighborhoods lighted up. Thank you, and have a great day.
Lighting protects American soldiers when they come home from war. They don't get attacked at night. Keeps them safe because they're fighting overseas for the Constitution of the United States, the Bill of Rights, the democracy. I love to see lighting, you know, to protect us because there's a lot of bad things in the night. And I want to give a hooty-hoot to Sylvia Hawkins. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. Open the roll, close...
Madam President, there isn't a vote necessary on this one. It's just to be continued.
Correct, I'm sorry. July 14th, you said?
14th, yes.
Okay, it'll be continued to July 14th. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 14, and that has cards in it. It already has had a public hearing in committee.
As colleagues, it's already had a public hearing. I will have a five-minute public hearing on that item, so those of you speakers, please note that it is five minutes total. Eric Carlini, Sochi Luhan, Albert... Alberto, excuse me, Delia Elliman. Please, if you could, all stand there behind because we will go from one speaker to the next. Eric Carlini? Mr. Carlini here? Okay, if not, Ms. Luhan? Please, we're going to begin the public hearing. We have one minute each, and it'll be for a total of five minutes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, city council members. My name is Sochi Luhan, and I'm here to address the item 14. I believe it's for community housing and to attract more grocery neighborhood convenience stores, et cetera. The South Central Farm actually provided for District Nine much of the produce that many of the community members were able to utilize, and I find it very difficult to believe that Ms. Perry and, you know, she has not stepped up to try to save the South Central Farm. Mr. Parks, as you know, when children, students have activities to do, it deters them from joining gangs. And I know you know that as a former police officer, et cetera. And the South Central Farm also provided workshops, health fairs, things of that nature in order to help students to stay away from gang activity. And the South Central Farm also provides a safe haven, so I just want to remind you of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can ask all the members of this, who are speaking on this item, this is not an item on South Central Farm, so to please talk about the retailers, the issue before us.
Good morning, once again, city council members. My name is Alberto Clatoya, and I live in the 9th district. And just to let you guys know, there's no Trader Joe's in South Central, so the freshest thing that we actually got were the things that we grew. And I want to put out this so we could establish a permanent farmers market in South Central where we could get organic for low-income families and under served areas such as South Central LA. Thank you.
The agenda item 14 speaks of underserved areas of the city and provision of fresh produce. It also speaks about underserved areas of the city and nutritious food. What the South Central Farm was doing in the 9th district and the South Central was the provision of nutritious food and healthy environment for children.
We could, again, we want you to talk to the item that is before us today.
Yeah, that is item number 14. It's talking of fresh foods to underserved communities, and that is exactly what the South Central Farms was doing, councilwoman. I don't know whether there's a... It's written in English. It's written in English. And that is exactly what the South Central Farm was doing in South Central and for the community of Los Angeles. So item number 14 naturally should have been an item that fully discusses the life and the struggles of the South Central Farmers. Thank you.
Samuel Sanchez?
It's ironic that the people are asking money through the CRA and other development projects, asking what the city can do to help put healthy nutritious food in underserved areas of the city, specifically in areas such as South Central or South Los Angeles. It's very ironic that now you guys understand that there is a need there. I was looking on the Tax Assessor website. It said something about how that's an alcohol-zoned area because they had too many liquor stores in the area, and they were doing things like putting restrictions on liquor stores who started up in the area because they had such a problem with crime and alcohol distribution in that area. And it's very ironic that there's an organic place that has food fresher than Trader Joe's right there in the middle of South Central, and it's now locked up by one of the richest developers who has ties directly with the city and who is being investigated, well, the actions of that being investigated. Thank you.
Yes, sir, you'll be our last speaker. The following individuals who are here will not be speaking because we only have less than a minute left. Alma Soto, Ama Jabal Butler, Edgar, and From Reese. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, hello. Good morning. I'm addressing issues that's going on in our city.
Say your name for the record, please.
My name is Eric Carlini. I wanted to address what issues are going on in our community of South Central, the 9th district. We're having many issues with what's going on here.
Yes, sir, if you could address the issue that is before us today.
The issue is, you know, we're feeding families in our neighborhood, South Central, and the issue is that we're being put out onto the street and being treated like criminals. You know, I directly was arrested this day on the 13th, and they came in with hundreds of police and evicting people like we're criminals, tearing things down.
Again, sir, the issue before us is encouraging, and the restaurants and dining, so if I ask you...
I want the city council to represent the people, and the people are standing up and asking our representatives to represent us.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The item is now before us, colleagues. If you could, please, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Parks and Ms. Han? Sorry about that. Apologize.
No, I just want to... Ms. Perry, and just comment on the reason that she came with this motion primarily deals with the loss of a grocery store at Figueroa and Vernon after being in place for over 50 years. And then in the 8th district, we lost a store at... And then in the Eighth District, we lost a store at Hoover in Manchester overnight where Ralph's Grocery Store moved out and turned it into a 99-cent store. And I think it's an ongoing process that recent Pepperdine studies showed that in L.A. County, there's one grocery store for every 10,000 residents, but in the South Los Angeles area, there's one for every 40,000. And so it's something that shows there is a shortage. The issue that we'd like them to explore also is the whole variety of potential grocery stores from independents and also the variety of what will come in because we do see some very successful, a very successful store, Egante at Slauson in Vermont. But we also, as we've gone through a good number of our general plans and our specific plans, the number-one issue about restaurants is sit-down restaurants, and that is why in the Crenshaw specific plan, it specifically mentioned no more drive-through businesses on Crenshaw. So it is an issue that we're looking to see if the city family can bring together what incentives might be available to attract those businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought this up because it's also, I want to make sure we don't forget the northern part of my district because that's also a problem in terms of grocery stores, certainly sit-down restaurants. We have like one sit-down restaurant, which my father worked really hard to get many, many years ago in the Watts-Willbrook community. So there is still only one sit-down restaurant in Watts. What I'd like to know, I hope part of this report, this feels like deja vu. When I was on this committee five years ago, we asked for a report back. In fact, I believe we appropriated dollars to have some sort of a market study on how we might attract some of these very same businesses to come to South Los Angeles. So as a part of this report, I'm hoping that CDD will, I think CRA was a part of that, will look at the work that has already been done, and will look at the dollars that we've already appropriated in the city to do this, almost this very same thing. So I know some work has been done on this already. Let's try to build on that, but I certainly want my 15th district to be a part of this because that's still a very, very big issue. And you know, it's also about other possibilities for our young people to have jobs. That's why, I mean, there's only so many McDonald's and so many Burger Kings and so many Taco Bells for summer jobs. And if it's a sit-down restaurant, if it's a grocery store, it gives our young people more opportunity to have summer jobs. So I completely applaud you for bringing this forward again, but I think let's look into the archives and see what market studies we've already done to try to attract some of these businesses to South Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. One of the salient factors that we were discussing in committee was the fact that many of our communities, when you look at how they are assessed, we don't fit the mainstream guidelines and how decisions are made when we invest. We have large populations in these pockets, but we're looking for grocery stores. You start looking at how much money actually leaves the city to neighboring cities who do provide grocery stores and supermarkets, there's a lot of money we're losing as a community at a much greater cost to those who live in these communities because they have to travel farther for supermarkets. And so one of the report backs that we're asking for is understanding how much money we're losing because we don't capture the dollars and keep it within the neighborhoods. We don't recycle those dollars again. Two, when you look at the volume and the amount of money that exists in these neighborhoods, and what I keep referring to are the small wallets, there's actually quite a bit of money that we are letting escape. So if those are going to be reporting back, give us those indicators in terms of how much money there is in small wallets, in terms of volume of people who have certain income. And true, it would be at poverty, below poverty, but you look at the aggregate and how many numbers there are, it's a presence that's fairly significant. And I use our experience just east of MacArthur Park where folks told us, in the mainstream, people who make decisions, the site locators of these stores and companies, that we don't want to go there because it's too poor, there's leakage because they steal from, that's what that neighborhood's known for, so why would we want to invest there? It took an independent entity, it took outside investors, pioneers if you will, who were able to put together the kind of investment where, lo and behold, it becomes one of the most lucrative centers. We have a Home Depot, a Starbucks, a Food for Less, a Rite Aid, two blocks east of MacArthur Park. So someone is missing the boat here. And it's up to us to start defining our communities, talk about the strength in our numbers and the amounts of money that actually exists in these communities. And I believe the smart pioneers, the ones who would want to speak to our community in a respectful way, build quality stores with decent landscaping, with proper lighting, you will find a very lucrative center. So I'm hoping that those who are reporting back on this report are able to capture the value we have in these communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 16, called special for a card from the public, and this is the Neighborhood Council Review Commission. There are three nominations that have been submitted, and council has had the communication distributed.
Michael Hunt and Matt Dowd. Mr. Hunt, Mr. Dowd, let's go.
The Sylvia Hawkins School of Public Protection, communication's important from the city clerk and the neighborhood council, and getting response from your neighborhood council's tough. I'm getting a message from my field deputy. I get this message. I don't know if Channel 35 is quick enough to get that. In fact, it's a great reality station, Channel 35, and I hope they're covering this item with their usual, you know, technical finesse and aplomb.
Well, community support and community neighborhood grassroots conventions, things like that, people that are supposed to help and protect the community, be viable sources like our city council people, supposed to work with our grassroots neighborhood council, things like that, I'm all for that. I think that it should inexplicably intertwine, too. I think that we need more city council working with more grassroots so that they can be in touch with the neighborhood and the neighborhood review. I think that the real people that should be voting in is the real people that actually are doing the work, doing the community-based policing, and that's in touch, not somebody that's way out of touch with the community like a lot of us or like a lot of you guys are. And you guys went to address the issues, and we have some strong neighborhood community people in our communities, but we never hear from them because either they're afraid to talk to you guys or that they're afraid to come forth. I think that it's a very important viable source that we invoke or that we have our community people come in and help us out. And I think the more community people down here, the more you guys might understand what you guys are doing and be involved in it. And just like after '93, after the riots, the more community that got involved, it was more effort that we brought a safer community to South Central in community-based policing. So it's nice to say a lot of things, but to stay actually in touch with the community is the best thing, and by being in contact with the community is actually working with them and being at the grassroots meetings and all of the council people so that we can incorporate some kind of style, some kind of visuality to what's really going on in today's world and making everybody happy. So it's like, you know, this is a great thing, but now we need participation from city council as well to be down there and actually having a great communication and a great ability with the neighborhood council.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 18, called special for a card from the public.
Candido?
Thank you, Madam President. Before I start, you know, I'm not here to, I hate to use the word kiss your butts, but when people do something good, I think they should be spoken about. Mr. Weesar, I was just told that you were smart enough to hire Mr. Avila as your deputy chief. That individual is one of the most honorable men you'll ever meet. He is fantastic. Congratulations. Your district will benefit from him being with you. In regards to item 18, that is an assessment against Van Nuys Boulevard. In 1973, I landed on Van Nuys Boulevard. I was homeless. I lived there behind the Army Navy store for almost three months. I know Van Nuys Boulevard. For the last three years, we've worked with the businesses on Van Nuys Boulevard, hoping to get an increase in that assessment. 62,000 is not enough. And the only reason I'm here is so that you folks know that the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council will be bringing that up, and if we're going to pass it anyway, we still need to make sure that these assessments are monitored so that the business owners and the community gets their dollars' worth. So again, we're looking forward to the hearing on the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Candido, for being here. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item number 20, called special for a card from the public.
Mr. Hunt and Mr. Dowd? Time's ticking.
Okay, item 20. I've been up to the Miracle Mile District, and there's a lot of free speech up there, signage needs to be lit up at night, people's first amendment right to have a particular message. I'd like to welcome you all back to the Matt Dowd, Michael Hunt show today on Channel 35. I'm going to hand it over to Michael Hunt, and then after a few more messages, we'll be back.
This is about setting a hearing date. If you could please speak to the topic. Time, your clock is ticking, Mr. Hunt.
Oh, yeah, street lighting, Wilshire and Miracle Mile. I think that's very important. The reason why is, like I said, the lighting area, it plays into a great effect to keeping this community safe and things like that. I think that more lighting...
Sidewalk? This is about a sidewalk?
Sidewalk lighting. Right, right, sidewalk lighting.
No, it's a hearing date for sidewalk.
Well, I think we should all be there. Thank you, and much love to you guys.
Madam Clerk, this item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
I would ask our speakers on every item, this is a serious issue before the city council, to speak to the items that are before us. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 31, called special for a card from the public.
Mr. Hunt? Okay, the item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Number 32, called special for a card from the public.
Mr. Hunt and Mr. Dowd? The clock, please set the clock. Begin. Again, speak to the item that is before us.
Okay, relative to declaring the 58th Annual Emmy Awards presentation a special event, $35,000, that's costing the taxpayers. I would have preferred to see that money go to the block party in South Central, have it switched around the other way because I think the Emmys, they can afford to pay for their own presentation. But it's nice to know that, you know, the city's there to look after people who come to it asking for help. You know, I just want them to know that, you know, there's a lot of people out in the community asking for help just to fix up little mistakes. You know, they're only very small, but they can be fixed under narrow tailoring and particularized messages. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Back on the wards, I think that's a very symbolic issue. I think that we are addressing the money in the wrong area, $35,000. I would love to see that go to the South Central Farmers or somebody that could really use that money. I think that they're rich, they've been in business for 58 years. I think they are well-established, and I think, like Matt said, the 75th Block Party sure could use that money and do different things within the community, like buy community computers for the schools and for the after-scu program. So I would hope that the lobbying part, the $35,000, be reexamined and going into the right part of the community that it really needs to go to because the 58th Emmy Awards really don't have a money problem. I mean, not unless they're going to give us all seats there, and then I'm in agreement with it, you know? If I can get a ticket to the awards, that would be great. I think that's solely what the $35,000 is for, for everybody to get a seat here, but I mean, I could be mistaken.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. Next item, please. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, if we could vote on that item. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Item's been approved. Yes, Mr. Wesson?
Madam President and members, we have another distinguished visitor with us today, former L.A. City Councilperson, current state senator, soon-to-be state assemblyman, Richard Alakon.
Welcome, Richard. Nice to have you back. Yes, Mr. Zine?
I moved Mr. Alakon to the center table. I want to ask him some tough questions.
Mr. Zine?
Because he's a great guy who delivers... Thank you. Thank you. I have an introduction as we're doing introductions. I have with me, they just got out of school yesterday, we have Holly Eliman, Chet Eliman with their mom, Dash, here in Mom's showing them City Council in action. They live in the Third District, so wave to everybody. You're on TV, honey. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Welcome. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, is item 34, called special for a card from the public.
Mr. Hunt and Mr. Dowd?
Thank you again, back on the record for the block party. Now, I am all for this block party. Here's the thing I'm having, they're not getting enough funds for the block party, so I think that we should up the, increase their value to like Channel or to like $35,000 like the Emmy Awards are getting, and let's play fair all the way across the board so that everybody can get an equal piece of the pie. I think in South Central, they need a little bit more of the pie because we see them complaining every day. Now, 34, I think that we should up the cost to at least half the amount, $17,000 for that block party, and let them have a good block party, and I'm all for Perry and Parks on this one. Great job in the community. I hope you guys be there. I think that's the biggest message along with the money. I think that you guys need to be there and a part to be, you know, a part of the community. So $35,000 for number 34. Yeah!
Mr. Dowd?
Thank you. It's nice to have the opportunity to get up once again and just say a couple of words about, you know, a relatively important issue, too. I want to congratulate council people Perry and Parks for putting forward this motion for the annual 75th Street Block Party, July 5th, 2006, now a special event. All fees and costs are absorbed by the city. I totally support that, and I just wanted to get up and make that known because, as I said, it's the Matt Dowd, Michael Hunt, Mike Hunt show today. Thank you.
Thank you. That public comment is closed. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
37, also called special.
Item 37, which is declaring the Summer Gift and Home Furnishing Show a special event. Mr. Hunt and Mr. Dowd?
Thank you very much. It's great to be involved in the city, just to have a word on, you know, declaring the Summer Gift and Home Furnishing Show. I'd love to furnish a home if I could afford to buy a new condo down on Venice Beach, but I'm going to go to the Summer Gift and Home Show and dream about what I could possibly buy if I still had my livelihood. But I'm all for, you know, anything that's going to help the community. Thank you very much.
Wow, good, back on the record, the Matt Dowd, Michael Hunt show here, featuring our city council members. our city council members. I'm all for the furniture show, too, as well. I think that we need to take more time and get more furniture, even for City Hall this time. And I like to say on the record, as Bill Rosenthal called me, Mike Hunt's back on the record, and thank you, guys, for getting more furniture for City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Item's now been approved. Next item?
41, also called special.
Mr. Dowd and Mr. Hunt.
All right, this is probably the most important one on the agenda, probably because it's the final one, and everybody's waiting to get out of here. But, I just want to take my minute to express my support, you know, resolution by council member Rosenthal and councilman Smith. The LA Bridges Program, the assistance they've provided to children, families of our great city, and we commend them for their efforts, and it's something I've always wanted to support, along with clean air. I've been an advocate of clean water, healthy lifestyle, and perpetuating the spirit, here it is, it's in the, it's in the agenda, the spirit of genuine democracy and the integrity of true community.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, guys. Channel 35, back on the record, Matt Dowd and Michael Hunt Show, featuring city council. I do support the LA Bridges Program, and I think that's a great thing that you're doing. Bill, that's one of the best things that you have coming to the community, and I will support you on that effort, and I will do, put forth my best foot to make sure everything happens. I think that we need like three or four of those on the West Side as well, some in Weiss's district and everything else. But, supporting the bridge program is supporting yourself, and it's making people being aware of who they are and their First Amendment rights, and, you know, so that they won't be violated and things like that. So, here again, big ups to the LA Bridge Program. Good job, Rosenthal. Good job, Wendy Grohl, on the two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. God bless you, guys. We love you. See you Tuesday!
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They will be posted and referred?
Their excuses on the desk, council member Rosenthal requests to be excused Friday, June 30th and Friday, June 7th. There is a motion required on the excuse for July 7th.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Parks seconds. Next item?
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Wednesday, August 16th, to arrive at 10:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
She will be excused.
Councilmember Carneus requests to be excused Wednesday, July 12th, for city business and, excuse me, for personal business, and the 27th of June for city business, and that motion is required on the 27th.
Mr. Rosenthal moves, Mr. Weiss seconds. That item's been approved.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Tuesday, June 27th, for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Parks move, Mr. Zine seconds.
And councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, June 28th, for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Wesson seconds.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Colleagues, any announcements today? Mr. Reyes?
Yes. Thank you. We have several events happening. We have the 3rd Annual Chinese Food Festival, organized by the LA Chinatown Business Council at the corner of Broadway and College. We'll have, we'll be featuring demonstration cooking, we'll have a tour of Chinatown, we'll be enjoying martial arts, as well as Chinese food, as they say here, flicks, carnival rides, and cultural crafts. From 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM tomorrow, on Sunday, from 10:30 AM to 6:00 PM. Come on down, use the Chinatown Station, Metro Gold Line, and join the fun. We also have a Walk for Peace and Resource Fair tomorrow from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Toblerone Recreational Center. We'll have Congressman Maribas set up and 31st District attending. We'll have entertainment, free food, music, prizes, fun and games for all ages. And last but not least, we'll be having our LA River Committee Workshop, 1st of 3 in June, at 342 North San Flan Road at the Goodwill Workforce Center. We'll be, again, focusing on the revitalization master plan, and I hope in the next set of meetings, we get continued support. We want to hear what you have to say, how you want to see the river develop, and this is our chance to put it all on record. And, by the way, we'll also be having the World Cup Game, Mexico versus Argentina. Twelve noon.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, at the California Plaza, the grand performance. Last weekend, Tom Labange and I heard Arlo Guthrie do his shtick, and this weekend, Saturday night, Al Gore is going to be there, and he's going to do his movie on global warming, and a lot of people are intending to go there. I'm going to be going there, Jan Perry's going to be going there, and frankly, global warming is a big issue, and if you have the time on Saturday night, please come to the California Plaza for the grand performance of Al Gore and environmental issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. We have several events going on in the 8th District. On June 23rd through the 25th, there'll be three concerts in the Lemur Park Vision Parking Lot, featuring the Dance With My Father group that's putting this on. On the 23rd, the doors open at 4:00 PM, and the 24th, 25th, they open at 1:00 PM. Also, just to make sure the public's aware, every Saturday morning at 10:00 AM to 3:00, the Farmer's Market is open in Lemur Park. Also, the, one of our local community groups, Women in Power Conference is going on at the LAX Plaza Hotel at Culver City, and that's Friday, Saturday at 7:00 PM to 11:30. And then, this behalf of Mrs. Perry, the Project Accountability, in conjunction with YMCA, YWCA, the Council of 9th District, and the Save Our Streets Program will go on on Saturday, June 24th, 10:00 AM to 3:00, at John Muro Middle School, and will be involved with the YWCA, the LA Bridges, and the council office.
Thank you. No other announcements? We do have adjourned motions. If everyone could please rise. If everyone could please rise. Thank you. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Robert Wesley Grant, who was a lifetime resident of San Pedro. He attended 15th Street Elementary School, Dana Junior High, and in the summer of '32, graduated from San Pedro High School. He was drafted in 1942 and proudly served in the Pacific. He used a three-day pass to marry the love of his life, Helen Dietrich, on May 16th, 1943. He was even a pioneer in helping Monsignor Gallagher locate a spot to build Holy Trinity School, and later the Church Building. He worked on the waterfront for many years and retired from San Pedro Fish Market at the age of 80. There'll be a funeral mass Saturday, June 24th, at 10:00 AM at Holy Trinity Church.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Thank you, members. I ask, we adjourn in memory of William Lamb, who was the executive, the top executive there for many years at KCET Television, was involved for the development of the Cosmo Series and the American Playhouse, and the Acusto Odyssey Program, many, many great programs, Jazz America. William J. Lamb, the chief operating officer for KCET for many, many years, survived by his daughter Diane and sons William and Matthew, and his companion many years, Maurice Sello.
Thank you. Any other colleagues? If not, I have one. Like, colleagues, if we could adjourn in memory of Mildred Balter. She passed away on Thursday, June 15th. Ms. Balter was born in Dallas, Texas, on July 19th, 1908, and died in her Los Feliz Home on June 15th, just about a month shy, as you could see, of her 98th birthday. She lived in Los Angeles for more than 80 years, the last 66 years in the same house in the Los Feliz area. She moved to Los Angeles, graduated from Roosevelt High School and attended UCLA. That's where she met her husband and married him in 1931. He passed away eight years ago. They had been married for 67 years and have one daughter, Barbara Khan, three granddaughters, and five great-granddaughters. They're a family of women headed by a wonderful, loving, and generous matriarch. Ask that we adjourn in her memory. She is survived by Barbara Khan, her daughter, and as I mentioned, her three granddaughters and five great-granddaughters as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is adjourned.